The Catawba County Board of Education, regular meeting through July 28, 2025 to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, then followed by the pledge of allegiance by Ms. April Underwood. Next will be the approval of the minutes, but before that, Dr. Barnett is unable to attend tonight. And Don Sigmund is also able to not attend, but he is here virtually. With that being said, I seek approval of the minutes for June 23, 2025's school board meeting.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands, Don? That's unanimous. Okay. Just to clarify, Dr. Barnett is not here because she had been in the hospital briefly over the last week. And talked about attending virtually, but just didn't feel that she had the energy to put into it that she usually would. So that's why she's not here in person or virtually. That quick update. Right on to the adjustment and approval of the agenda by Dr. Stover.
Chairman members of the board, we do have a request for our operations department approval of a quote under to purchase a touchless bus wash. And we'd like to put that at the end of the meeting if you guys would so choose.
So we will make that number 14?
After closed session. Yeah, 14 after closed session, yes.
Hearing the adjustments for the agenda, I need a motion of approval to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second to approve the agenda with so noted additions. Hearing no further discussion, show of hands, so I would approve. Next up is the superintendent's report by Dr. Stover.
Thank you Chairman Settlemyer, members of the board. We do have one special recognition this evening. And if you would join me out front, we are in the presence of a state winner. All right, Ms. Berry, would you join us up here, please? Ms. Barrier is, as you all know, our child nutrition director. And we learned a couple of months ago, no, pardon me, just learned a couple of weeks ago that she was named the North Carolina Child Nutrition Director of the Year. So that is a big deal. Let's give her a big round of applause. In fact, no one knew that she was the Child Nutrition Director of the Year. No one called myself, or in fact, her own department didn't know until they saw this award that the state had given her in her office. I think that says a lot about Ms. Barrier's leadership. Extremely humble, hardworking, and gets the job done every day. And what you've done with short staff and what your staff has done and the quality that you bring each day has been amazing. It's very well deserved. I'm going to give you back the award North Carolina gave you. Shake your hand and get some pictures. We'll do one last round of applause, please. One other note, Chairman members of the board, tomorrow, pardon me, Wednesday starts our administrative academy at Lenora Ryan University. We want to thank Lenora Ryan for hosting us this year. We look forward to a great couple of days. As you all know, we'd love to have you all come out Wednesday morning if you're able and just fellowship for a couple of minutes before we get started. And then Sunday, or pardon me, Sunday, thinking about ice cream. Thursday afternoon at 2:30, we are going to have some soft serve ice cream. If anyone's available, we'll be at the same place we were. Stop by. It's not fat free or sugar free, but I think it'll be, yeah, it'll be delicious. So, but we're looking forward to that in the next couple of days, or this, this week. So I think that's all I have today. Thank you.
Okay, just a quick little update from me. Late June, I was approached by the Newton Conover School Board. They asked if we would be willing to redraw some lines to add students, their population. I didn't say anything to them at the time that, that I would bring it to you guys and get your thoughts on it. Be transparent about what happened. Get your thoughts on it and see what, what our board would choose to do. Attention to what they have. Other than their thoughts. So we'll hear what the attorney has to say in closed session about what we just spoke about, and we may need to add that to the agenda.
An agenda item and a, and a possible vote, it would, it would need to be an agenda item.
Understood.
Okay.
Next up is public comment, and that'll be handled by Mr. Clayton Mullis.
I believe that Dr. Stover wanted to say something under your chairman's report.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you Chairman Settlemyer. The, I, I just wanted to be known that any time that we give students to other districts for about every 100 students that would leave, that's about six employees that I would have to reduce. So I want you to keep that in mind. So that request comes with some pain on our part for us to give them students on their part, which I understand where they're coming from. At the same time, though, we're Catawba County Schools and we have a family here, and for us to reduce positions is hard. And so I would just like to add that this evening.
Thank you.
And also with the commissioners saying that they have put this on hold at this point to regroup and look at everything in Catawba County. I mean, why would we be looking at that with just Newton Conover right now when we know that commissioners are, you know, going to potentially look at other, other options?
I, I just wanted to bring forward what they had asked me, just to let you know what, what their thoughts were. That's it.
Thank you. I do have one other thing. My apologies Chairman Settlemyer, is Mr. Moore's got a quick construction update he wanted to share. Mr. Moore, if you could come over to the microphone, because board members online won't be able to hear you. Thank you, sir.
Do we have a board member back online? Okay. So we only had one and it's just, and he's not back online. Reason I ask is the minutes have to reflect that. And so if he does, Mr. Sharp, come back online with, you'll let the board chair know. Thank you.
So two things, the first photos that you see are at Maiden E and they are somewhat dated. We already have the binder course down for this project and in fact are doing the top course. Our playground equipment will be installed there soon. This view is from the drive looking down toward the school. This will be our bus entrance and where our school bus drivers will park their vehicles during the day. We are attempting to seed this area so that the children will have a playground. And again, we will have playground installation and hopefully a nice area to play soon. There will be some lighting that will be installed eventually by the town of Maiden so that different teams can practice after hours at that facility. And there will be a walking track as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, these photos are somewhat dated. We've, by the time they're submitted, time passes, things move quickly. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about Maiden Elementary, however.
I don't have any questions, but it looks good and it looks like everything's on schedule, at least for that, that part.
Yes, we're very pleased. We've got a couple of little minor tweaks, issues that we're trying to work through within the building. A little bit of a humidity concern, but we've got people on that trying to get that worked out.
Thank you.
Our next project is Maiden Middle. And again, these photos are roughly 10 days to two weeks ago. And we've made much progress in that time. We actually have many of those units being fired up so that those can be balanced. We feel pretty good about the progress in this project at this point. It was a very heavy lift, but DDI and both Holland and Hammerick and their subs in that project have done an excellent job in meeting timelines. So a lot of grid replacement in those open ceilings, new lighting. You can also see cable trays for future installation there as well. The security vestibule has been poured, it's coming into place. So we're very pleased with the overall progress at this project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time with regard to Maiden Middle.
So is this project on schedule?
Yes, sir. And we're very pleased. Now, we probably won't get the building released to full use until the week before students come back. So we're going to have to do some little schedule adjustments with regard to teachers coming back and being able to have them in certain areas of the building, not in certain areas of the building. So we're going to have to manage that. But we're confident that the building's going to be released to us on the 18th, which is good. We're very, very pleased. I don't know, Robert, if there's any other information. I think that's pretty much. Yeah, and we're pleased because as I said, this was a very heavy lift and we're very pleased with the work that they've put forward.
So did you bring this AC unit from the old Maiden Middle School in here tonight to, as a reference to what they, they have in their, had in their classrooms?
We've got a few of those and we had to use those at Maiden Middle School last year and other places. Chasing, chasing away some HVAC troubles. So I know that Angie's Hall has endured this for a minute, but we're getting the systems repaired.
Thank you.
Chairman Settlemyer, I'd also like to add too, some good news on Challenger. Thank you to Mr. Sharp and his staff, got internet connectivity and new PAP building today. And I went over there last week and the nest is completed and looks absolutely wonderful. We still got some moving things around, but Challenger will be ready. Just spoke to Mr. Moore last week. We plan on having a, another ribbon cutting, if you will, have our board there, CBCC and our partnership. And I think it's going to be a really nice place for, for our Challenger students, so we're excited about that. So I just wanted to update y'all.
Seems like Don's back now.
Thank you.
Okay, now can we can proceed with the public comment? Clayton Mullis is going to lead that.
Okay. First person to speak is going to be Mr. Charlie Shepherd. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hey, thank you for letting me speak. I'm addressing, I hope I'm not wasting your time. Consent item number two, overnight slash out of state field trips. That caught my eye. I was late getting that. Getting this, so anyway, I threw something together if I can find it. Sounds ridiculous, but here we are, Governor Stein vetoed a bill that simply defines what a woman is. House Bill 805 affirms the truth that men and women are biologically different. This reality matters in law, education, sports, and safety. Here's what the bill does. It defines male and female in state law based on biological reality. It ensures single sex spaces like women's shelters, locker rooms, and prisons remain protected. It requires age verification for online pornography to shield minors from exploitation. It bans the state from funding, bans state funding for gender transition procedures on children. Guarantees parents' access to school library content and classroom activities. And it allows students with religious objections to opt out of certain gender related lessons. You know, the General Assembly has a narrow window to override vetoes. Tomorrow, we're expected to vote on this, but Catawba County overwhelmingly is in favor of this bill. I guess most of us know that. It's, and you were elected by Catawba County. I voted for everybody on this board, even Dr. Barnett. That's a great Dr. Barnett. I think she did greatly. I differ with an opinion on her with some things. So I ask you to please represent Catawba County. I don't know how this will affect overnight trips or is it out of state field trip for any kind of field trip, you know? Two sex, two sexes, separate. Separate spaces for different sexes. Yeah, I pray that these few consider this in a wise way. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Next speaker is Ms. Vicki Baker.
Thank you, school board members. My name is Vicki Baker. I'm here representing Moms for Liberty. Tonight, we'll be discussing two items of information. The first has to do with the recent Supreme Court ruling on June 27th, Mammad versus Taylor. This ruling allows and encourages parents to exercise their right to opt out their children from curriculum surveys, programs, policies, and activities that go against their religious beliefs. This includes LGBTQ plus related surveys, lessons, pronoun usage, bathroom and locker room use, and any other program that focuses on gender identity. Our organization will be providing parents with a form, letter to complete and give to the principal of their child's school outlining their rights according to this recent court ruling. What does that mean for our district? First, the school should provide clear advance notifications to parents for any upcoming lessons covering the topics of gender identity, sexuality, or other related themes. Second, parents have the right to opt out their children without penalty or stigma from specific lessons that conflict with their religious convictions. And district policies must be aligned. Third, children who opt out should be given meaningful equivalent educational opportunities, ensuring they don't fall behind while respecting family beliefs. Fourth, teachers will need guidance to handle opt out sensitively to implement alternative lessons professionally. This ruling doesn't ban these materials altogether, nor does it restrict academic freedom. Rather, it reinforces parental rights, ensuring families can agree or disagree with specific content presented to their young children. I urge the district to swiftly align its policies with this decision, ensuring transparency, respect, and balance moving forward. The second item is See You at the Library coming up Saturday, August 16th. Moms for Liberty is partnering with Brave Books, providing a wholesome story hour. Even though we have met resistance from the public library, the vet will be at Saturday, August 16th at 9:15 a.m. at Cheryl's Ford Public Library. April Underwood from the school board will be reading one of the books. We will be giving away the books being read to some lucky participants. And look forward to getting kids excited for the start of the school and another year of learning. You can register at seeyouatthelibrary.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Last speaker for the evening will be Mr. Lawrence Wedeman.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items, which are personnel consent, overnight, out of state, funding activities, and all had a chance to look over these consent items. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent items.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of raised hand. Don, how do you vote?
All those in attendance. Debbie, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I can't hear y'all. I can't hear a thing.
Okay.
I lost connection a while ago and I just, I just now got the picture back.
Okay.
I don't have sound.
Next item on the, could you hear me, Don?
I can hear you, but I now can't see you. All ago, I could see everybody, but I couldn't hear you.
You're not missing much, but we're all still here and look the same. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the amended board goals and action steps for board members. What was added in red has what's been changed. Is there any further discussion on that? If there are any questions or any further discussion, I just need a motion and a second to approve these. Been working on this as well.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of raised hand. That is unanimous, even with Don Sigmund. You have to say yes or no, Don.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Don. Take the rest of you. Next on our agenda is new business with the approval of requests regarding Title I, I'm sorry, Title II, III, and IV federal government reductions. By Dr. Stover.
Okay, members of the board, Chairman Settlemyer, great news. I sent to you, the federal government is going to release our Title II, III, and IV money. It won't be all of it. We look to, it'll look to appear about, oh, probably around a $70,000 difference in Title II and Title III. And some of that's still up in the air, too. So we don't have to come to you tonight and ask to use fund balance, which is fantastic. We are going to be, some of the changes we've made, we're going to leave in effect so that we can prepare for what could be the future. We're not sure what, you know, what Title I, II, and III will look like in the future. So we want to make sure that we'll have some funds available if we need to carry over. One of those, as you guys know, Title III is One of those, as you guys know, Title III is a lot of our ESL program. Of course, that's a federal requirement to have ESL, so we still have to have those things. So, it's not something we just have to find somewhere else in the budget. But for this evening, you will see what we had worked out. But for this, at this point in time, with the funds coming our way, we will not have to ask to use fund balance to prop those things up. So, that's good news. I also want to tell you in our Title I, that was a, Title I was a $270,000-ish dollar reduction as well. But I want to tell you that between Ms. Davis and Mr. Sigmund and all our elementary principals pre-planning, that is, that is, and Ray, Ms. Thompson, too, with all her work, and I'm probably missing some folks, but they created a budget with a reduction. And because of that, we were able to move forward and not have to use fund balance in that situation either. So, a credit to our directors and Ms. Davis, Ms. Thompson for planning ahead, our principals, great insight, and our BLT, too, our building leadership, building leadership teams in our elementary schools are instrumental in how those title funds are used. So, we're thankful for them planning ahead. So, I come to you tonight with no action necessary. Ms. Davis, am I missing anything that you would like to add? Thank you for your work on your handout as well. We're good? Any questions?
Thank you, that's very good news from the federal government releasing those funds. So, we didn't, I know there, for a minute, there was a panic about some things, but it worked out.
Yeah, we, we put together a plan and we didn't have to use it, so that's great. Thank you all.
Next up is approval of the 2025-2026 Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan Federal Programs Grant for Title I and Assurances presented by Mr. J.R. Sigmund.
Good evening, board. As Dr. Stover has already stated, we weren't sure about this presentation. But, so I'm glad I went ahead with it since we found out late Friday that everything was going to be released. I'm going to start with Title I. It was always released, so we had it, we had the planning way before, so we went ahead with that. But as Dr. Stover said, as you see here, we had a $276,000 reduction in Title I, but that wasn't because of the federal government reducing it. The state of North Carolina got the same amount they always receive for Title I. However, due to the number of charter schools that were open in the state of North Carolina, the funds were divided by more, by a higher number of schools. So, that's where that $276,000 difference came, was because of all the charter schools that were opened in the state of North Carolina this previous year. So, that's where the cut came. As you see here, all these, of course, I'd already sent it to you guys when it was released, so I have withheld there, but it's not. However, we don't have it yet. The last thing I got from DPI was Monday, Friday evening, and they said that the budgets would be released the week of the 28th. So, sometime this week, DPI said they would release the money, but we don't know when this week it will be released. Having said that, we also don't know what exactly the planning allotments will look like as opposed to what they did look like before they were withheld. So, these figures will represent what we had, the planning budget that was first released. So, are there any questions there? Does that make sense? So, we're hoping they'll remain the same, but we don't know. If they remain the same, our Title II was cut by $85,600-ish. Title III was cut by $8,500, and Title IV, we gained almost $5,000 in Title IV. So, that's an explanation of this table, and we will see what, what it looks like. And Angie, have you heard anything from your end about a timeline?
True.
Okay. Right. And as far as the grant goes, they deleted the Title II, III, and IV shells from my grant online. So, I do not have access to it. And I checked before the board meeting began, and I still only have access to Title I. So, what I'm asking for tonight, when I go through this, is approval of Title I, II, III, and IV pending the release of the current withheld money, if that's legitimate. Crystal, is that legitimate? Okay, so, of course, the first thing we talk about with any of these, all four of these funds, is all four have to be directly tied to our strategic plan. So, I have linked in our comprehensive needs assessment that I created, that is there for you guys to look at. And then, also for the goals and strategies, I took all the goals and strategies from our current strategic plan and tied them to everything we want to spend money on. So, they have to be tied to the strategic plan and those goals. So, everything was tied to at least one of the goals, or it can't be in the plan. So, that's those two documents, and that's what has to be done first. Then, I want to get into the details of the Title I. As you know, or may not know, Title I is based on all free and reduced lunch applications. So, what we do is in May, we get that from child nutrition, and then I have to rank the schools based on the highest free and reduced lunch percentage and work my way down. All of our elementary schools are now Title I schools. Cheryl's Ford came on board this past year as their first year. But they, you have to have 35% or greater, but you can also qualify if you are 30%, but I have to do a waiver to give them the money. So, I did that last year, but this year, they are over the threshold, so no waiver will be required. They are like all the other Title I schools, and all 16 of our elementary schools are Title I. What we spend the majority of our Title I funds on are people. Most schools want additional teachers to help reduce the class sizes in the upper grades. So, that's what the majority of the money for Title I is spent on. It's also spent on academic facilitators. Every elementary school has an academic facilitator housed at their school, paid for with Title I money. And then, some do additional teacher assistants, some do tutors, bus monitors, and other positions that are for people. This year, with the reduction, where the most of the cuts happened were tutors, and they're all part-time, no full-time tutors or anything like that. So, that's where most of the cut hit. We also do school supplies and materials. This year, it's limited, because we started meeting with the principals today, one-on-one, and every one we met with today, 100% of their budget was spent on people. There was none left over for materials and supplies due to the cut. Then, some PD conferences and workshops at the district level and subs for those, computer equipment technology, most of the time, but again, with the cuts, we probably won't have any for that, but I always put it in there in case something comes up and we need it to recover.
Mr. Sigmund, do you mind if I interject real quick?
Yeah.
Just, just as a point of clarification. So, those were additional supply and dollars that they get through the title money. But we get student allotment, pardon me, from the state and local that we give to schools. So, they'd still have some supply money. I don't want you to think that, yeah, yes, thank you.
What they get and they need. Title I must be spent on things that are above and beyond what we give them as a district or local or state.
Thanks, just want to clarify that.
Then, at the district level, we purchase the Title I crate software, which is the federal accountability that we have to have because of the Title I program, and it houses all the school's documentation of how the money is spent and what they're doing to meet the federal regulations for Title I. It's spent on some transition to kindergarten supplies and materials. Homeless students, that's a requirement. We must spend some of the Title I money on homeless, and most of that goes to transportation for homeless and school supplies for the homeless students, the McKinney-Vento students. Parental engagement activities, we are required to meet twice a year at the district level, and then 1% of our total amount that we're allotted must be spent at the school level on parent engagement activities. And then, also, we have what's called equitable share. We have to meet with our private schools to offer Title I money to any private schools who may be housing children who live in the Catawba County School District, because those children can be entitled to that money. The private school has to elect to participate. No one has ever elected to participate until last year. That was our first one. Tria Life elected to participate, and they elected to participate again this year. So, what they do is they figure out who qualifies for free and reduced lunch at their school. Then, they tell me what home school that they're in in our, our district, and I verify that, and they have 10 students that attend their school that are in our district that we have to provide an equitable share to them. And there you see the total of what their equitable share will be for this coming school year. Even though they're in the Hickory City School District, it's where the kids reside, not where the school resides. Any questions? And then, I have a analysis of our cuts by schools. I shared this with the cabinet to let them know how each school was affected by the cuts. So, as you see here, in column B is what they received last school year. Column C is our planning allotment for this coming school year, and then column D is the difference. As you see, most schools were cut, some schools gained more, and I'll explain that. If you see, like Catawba gained $23,000. If you look at the next column, it's because they gained two spots in their ranking. So, in other words, they might have been number five out of free and reduced lunch, and they moved up to number three. So, as they move up, they get a higher per pupil amount per student. So, that's usually the only reason why schools this year would have increased is where they fell on the ranking. As you see, Claremont, they went up one. Mountain View went down, I mean, was cut, even though they went up one, but that's because they're so low on the ranking. Their free and reduced lunch percentage is not large. So, as Dr. Stover said, most of the principals had already, when I found out that we were being cut, almost $280,000, I sent an email to principals immediately and said, "Make a plan A, B, and C." You know, that what you thought you were going to get was cut by 15%, then cut by half, and then what would you do if you didn't get it at all? So, they immediately did that and figured it out on their own, so kudos to them. But as you see here in column G, this is how they handled their cuts. So, just an example, Balls Creek, they had to reduce one because they were in the hole and wouldn't have had enough money, so they reduced a teacher from retirement or attrition somehow. Either a teacher left, and they didn't replace them. So, no one lost a job, or we had to rift. So, as you see here, that is on all these. We had a teacher retiring in November for Banok this coming year. That person will not be replaced, and he worked it out to where he could do it without having the teacher be replaced. So, as you see, here are the cuts, and three of the schools, we have decided that the district will fund because we felt it was too late in the year to rift a person at this point in time for next year. However, if you see these three, they are Maiden, Oxford, and St. Stevens. If you look in column H, we have told them that for '26, '27, they will have to reduce a teacher or a TA. But that gives them a year to think about it, plan, and hopefully someone will retire or move or something, and then they just won't replace that person. So, we're not talking about losing a person. Any questions about Title I? That's way more in-depth than I've ever done before, but I felt like I needed to explain where we were. Okay, Title II, we'll move on to Title II. Title II is all about professional development and improving the field through professional development. So, some of our Title II funds will be spent on instructional coaches, the Beginning Teachers Institute, mentors for beginning teachers, tuition, testing, licensure, renewal, reimbursements, professional development such as workshops, trainers, and substitutes, and online Catawba teachers. Also in Title II, we have various conferences and trainings we send people to. The Aspiring Administrators Academy will occur this year. We have to, it's required that we put in some money for a reduced class size teacher for the district if we need it once school begins, and we have an influx in population somewhere. Out of all the years that I know we've been doing this, we've never used that money. But we just have to, we have to budget for it. Some pre-K PD for kindergarten transition from pre-K to kindergarten, curriculum development stipend, mileage reimbursement. And here, I'll talk a little bit about private schools. There are also, we have to offer private schools access to Title II. The only private schools we offer Title II, that we're required to offer Title II services to, are those that are located within our school district. So, if the building is within our school district, that's who I have to offer equitable shares to. Again, no one has volunteered or voted to do that until last year, and it was Tabernacle. They have elected to do it again this year, so I have to do it based on their total school population. That's the requirement in the formula. And you see, their equitable shares here would be $12,000 and $12,200 approximately, and they can only spend that on PD. Any questions about Title II? Okay, Title III is all English language acquisition. We spend that total budget on four ESL teacher assistants and half of an ESL lead teacher who serves like a mentor for the other ESL teachers. It's not a large budget, so that's all we're able to spend that on. And then, Title IV is all about student support and academic achievement. There's three categories in Title IV that we're required to spend this money with, and it's called well-rounded students, safety, and technology. And 20% of the budget has to be in well-rounded, and 20% has to be in safety. Technology, something just has to be spent, even if it's a penny. We have to spend something or budget something on technology. So, the list of things we're going to be spending on, Title IV on is online Catawba teachers, Vista software, elevation software, and off-the-class software, which are all ESL software components, ECATS, which is the database that we keep all of our 504s in Catawba County in, Safe Visitor software at every school, the Digital Citizen software, which is the technology education software that we, for safety, security cameras at various elementary schools, and we have budgeted some for technology for Chromebook replacements. So, any questions about Title IV?
Thank you for the detailed presentation, Mr. Sigmund.
Thank you. Yeah, I just need approval.
Looking for a motion in a second for approval for the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan for Federal Programs Grant, Title I and Assurances pending the funding that we'll know about this week. Will you, will you let us know when it comes in and how much it is?
Yes, I can let Debbie know, and then she can email.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to prove as presented.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise of hand, and Don, yes or no?
Yes.
That's unanimous by all those in attendance?
Thank you.
Mr. Sigmund?
You're welcome.
Next up will be information for the board on Education Policy 3.7700, Administrative Procedures presented by Mr. Lee Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. Just to give you a little bit of a history on this administrative procedure, it changed around 2009, 2010, and Catawba County schools went to the Latin honors system, which consists of magna or summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude based on our students' GPA. At that same time, the administrative procedure was put in place where only certain types of achievements would receive honors. I believe you have that list in your packet. There were things like the National Achievement Award, National Honor Society Beta Club, National Merit Scholar, North Carolina Academic Scholar, Honored Graduate, and Junior Marshall. So those, those were the awards that this administrative procedure set forth that would be recognized. And in 2009 and 10, this procedure does not recognize a valedictorian or salutatorian from our graduating classes. That is a change, students are still ranked. They receive a rank on their transcript. I believe that the state mandated that we do that. As far as recognizing valedictorian, salutatorian, we've not done that in, I guess, almost 15 years. I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can, or the board just wants to discuss.
The first one that Mr. Miller mentioned was actually changed in 2019. So prior to that time, it did reflect valedictorian.
Prior to 2019?
Yeah, if you'll look on the back of the first, the first paper, it's dated January 28, 2019.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll look at, there's a section that talks about 2009 and 10 with that, those incoming freshmen. Maybe that's when we changed the Latin.
It may be. Yeah, I'm just saying that's dated.
Any questions for Mr. Miller on that at this time? If not...
I'm not seeking any action from the board tonight, but I just want to give my thoughts on this. And I see the argument in the case that, that has been made for this. Several counties and cities across the state of North Carolina. I know Lincoln County schools and I believe Gaston County schools still recognize valedictorian and salutatorian. As a parent, I see it, and as a board member, I wouldn't be as privy to this if I didn't have a student that's a, a child that is a student at Challenger High School. I don't only think Challenger is a very successful school, all our high schools are very successful. There's a lot of emphasis put on athletics and so many other clubs and things in our schools. But a lot of people forget to focus that it's almost a sport with the valedictorian and salutatorian, that some of these students, many students that are at Challenger, and I have been informed on my daughter's feelings, that sometimes they felt left out, that things are grouped together and that the individualism and the hard work that those students put in is not recognized. Because at Challenger's graduation, all our other high school graduations, they were not recognized. And I know that's per the policy, but I disagree with that. And to me, some of these students, being valedictorian or salutatorian is their state championship per se. And my daughter, and I'm saying this as a parent, and I'll fight for my kids to have every opportunity that they can to be successful so that every child that comes in behind them can have that opportunity. But my daughter sacrifices her time, time with her friends, time with her family, because she sees the number game that it is, because certain schools that she's looking at to apply, she has to balance, I can't take art, I can't take band. He wants to take these other classes, she can maximize that GPA. But as we go forward, I, I'm not asking for the salutatorian or valedictorian to give a speech. I think they should have that option to give a speech if they do. And I think if the student body wants to elect somebody from the student body to give a speech, I'm very well appreciative of that. But at the very least, I think we should recognize the salutatorian and valedictorian at our graduations. I think their hard work is commended, and I think it should be commended. But that's all that I have.
And, and thank you for your smooth, and I, I'm just presenting information to the board and the board certainly do what they feel is right. I will say, you mentioned taking classes and not some students. I think that's why this policy was implemented when it was because students were, felt pressured to take certain classes and not take other classes because it got to the point where even an honors class could possibly drop their GPA a tenth or a hundredth of a point, and it might mean that they go from one or two to four or five, just that small little hundredth of a point possibly. So I think, again, that's why, and I wasn't in this role obviously at that time, but I think that's why this was implemented so students wouldn't feel that pressure maybe to, I've got to take this AP course versus this course. And also, like for example, art, band students, the courses that they take oftentimes for those particular subjects. When you average those into a GPA, again, for our top students, it may actually cause their GPA to drop slightly because it's not an AP course that maybe this student over here did take. And so it got to be so competitive between students. And, and not that competition is bad, I don't want to give off that feeling. But I think the feeling was, or thought was, students are taking courses for GPA versus what may benefit them after high school. And again, I'm not arguing for or against it. I just think it's important to know that I think that's why this administrative procedure was implemented when it was. Now, we'll also say, it's changed somewhat because now, 10 years ago, taking an art class, a band class for honors credit was almost unheard of. Now, students can opt to take honors credit in art, band, a CTE course, even an internship can now be honors credit if the student applies for that. So that is a, a difference now versus then, you can keep in mind as well. Any other questions?
Okay, next is approval of a two-year quote to purchase RTI Store MTSS Tracking Program. Mr. Lee Miller?
Yes, sir, thank you. So MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. And our students who are struggling with grade level content can be referred to MTSS. And it simply means interventions are put in place for those students to try to bring them up to grade level. So tier one is our core instruction. Every student receives tier one instruction. Tier two are those students who are initially referred into the MTSS process. And you'll typically do or have interventions twice a week for those students. And then hopefully that you'll see improvement and they can drop back down to tier one. Sometimes if we do not see students improve with tier two intervention, they may be moved to tier three intervention, which is more intensive, happens more often, a longer period of time. And then if we still do not see progress, it may lead to an EC referral. So with all that, all those interventions, we're constantly collecting data on these students. That data has to be stored. And a big piece of this process is you have to use that data to compare that student's progress to their like peers. So typically you would have, let's say, five students in the intervention group. If four of those students are making progress and one of those students is not, then we know we need to probably move that one student to more intensive interventions. So again, all that being said, we really have to have a way to collect the data, analyze the data, store the data, and then have a system to compare the data of our MTSS students. Also, RTI Store is an early warning system. So it can pick out students who, based on core instruction, may need to be considered for tier two interventions. So this system provides all of those things. We asked a representative from RTI Store and another vendor to come in and present their programs to our academic facilitators. We did that back in the spring because we wanted our academic facilitators really to give us their feedback on which program they felt was best. And so they felt like RTI Store really fit our needs better than the ECATS program, which we had used for a period of time. But it had changed a little bit with infinite campus. So RTI Store is, again, it's two-year quote for $85,600. The money would come from at-risk funds that we receive from the state and ATSI funds, which we receive. And we can pay for a portion of this with those ATSI funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
This will be used at all our elementary and middle schools?
Yes, sir.
But if there are no further questions, I need a motion on approval for a two-year quote to purchase RTI Store MTSS Tracking Program.
Make a motion that we approve.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, show a raise of hand. Don has stepped away. All those in the... Don, would you like to approve this?
Sorry, yes, I heard all of it, I just had to get up real quick.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sigmund.
Thank you. My next thing we're seeking approval of is the purchase of the iReady Math Toolkit. It's a kindergarten through eighth grade mathematics instruction supplemental resource that nine of our schools would like to purchase. Some of our schools used this last year and liked it. Teachers felt like it was a, a good resource, again, supplemental resource that was easy to access. The resources they felt aligned well with our content standards. There's student assessments that are included in this. And it would be, it's just a digital resource just for teachers to use and pull those resources from, for our students. Students were not, it's not another program for our students to be on a device. Again, this is for teachers to pull resources, lessons, and assessments from to use with their students. The money would come from textbook funds that are provided by the state. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any data, the schools that you said that used this, that they had an increase in, in results or the student results?
It was certain teachers and grade levels, and I, I, that's a good question. I, I don't, but I'll be glad to look. I, I know of a particular third grade and fifth grade teacher that used it. And their scores were, I would say, above our district average. So anecdotally, I can say, yes, it seems to, to have an impact on, on student learning. But as a whole, because teach, schools purchased this individually last year. So I'm not aware of exactly who all used it, but I am aware of two persons that used it.
Did nine of our 16 elementary schools use this? What are the other seven?
Not nine of, nine of our 16 are, would like to purchase this. Our other ones are using Invisions or Into Math, which is a pilot that they're doing. And we have two schools that are also doing a complete iReady pilot, which is free to them. And it's a comprehensive program. Again, this is more of a supplemental program. If you recall, last month, I spoke about the math resource guide that we created within our district so that teachers can pull, go to that resource guide. And if they're teaching Content Center 2.3, that resource guide will tell them if I have the iReady Toolkit, where those resources are to pull, or if I'm using Invisions, where those resources are. We're trying to make this as user-friendly as we can because we know we have different math curriculum that we're using. We're not happy about that. We got to get through next year, one more year before the new math standards come on board. And then our plan is to be aligned as a district. But for the last, last year and this year, we have let schools choose what they feel like is best for them and their students.
So if we had several schools that had higher averages with this particular program, were there any discussions with the other schools that were not using this so that they would know and would have an option to be able to use this since we had good results?
Right, and, and what we've seen is Invisions, which is something we've had for a number of years. When it is used to fidelity, we see, we see success. When we use, for example, Delta Math, which is more of a supplemental resource, when it is used to fidelity, we see success. The thing that we're, we, is a challenge for us is when we have pockets in a classroom, I'm going to use this today, I'm going to use this next week. And that can sometimes lead to misalignment, which we're trying to get away from. And we've said, schools, you can use what you feel like has worked for you. We've printed that resource guide to try to help focus them if they're going to use Invisions, the iReady Toolkit, Delta Math, so that when they're teaching a particular standard, regardless of what resource they're using, they know I can go to this part of that resource, this particular page or unit of that resource, and there's the content that I need. We felt like because it is somewhat scattered, it's a, a search and find mission. And we want to eliminate that and say, here's where you go with this resource that you're using. So to answer your question, this is what I feel like. When resources are used to fidelity, regardless if it's the iReady or the Invisions or Delta, and good classroom instructions taking place, we see success.
So what's coming next year, you don't know exactly?
Right, there's, there's one more year before the new math standards come about. So we have a year and a half, really. And the good part about this is we, because we have Invisions, which again, we've used for a number of years. We have Into Math at Star Town Elementary. And we have the iReady Pilot at Blackburn and Ban Oak. And again, the supplemental iReady Toolkit. We'll be able to tell really what resource we feel like is best for us at that time and look to adopt one resource for the district. Yes, and really, they're the ones who have, kind of get to the side. They tell their principal that, where they want to use Invisions, the iReady Toolkit, Delta Math. And then the principals let us know by what grade level. The only thing we've asked them to do is, as a grade level, we want you to be consistent at your school. We don't want, if we have five third grade teachers at St. Stevens Elementary, we don't want them using five different things. We want them to be able to plan together. So that's really the only stipulation that we've put out there is, as a grade level, we'd like you to do the same thing. We'd love for you to be aligned as a school, and especially at least with a grade band like K-2 and then 3-5. But we've not said you have to use this. We, we let teachers give their input, and then principals report back to us what they're, what they're asking for.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I need a motion and a second for approval of quote from Curriculum Association. Hearing none, I need a motion in a second for approval of quote from Curriculum Association to purchase iReady Math Toolkit.
Second that.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand, and Don be...
Yes.
That's unanimous for all those in attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up will be approval of the 2026-2027 Catawba County Schools Traditional School Calendar Draft by Ms. Rae Thompson.
Good evening, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. So you've all asked to take a look at the traditional calendar options. And there are two. One is traditional start and spring break, and the other has a separate spring break. Marty, I cannot access my links. Okay, well, let me... Do they have copies? Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect. So your first calendar draft is the traditional start and spring break, which has spring break following with Good Friday on March the 29th through April the 2nd. And then it connects in to that, for that week. That is what we have had for many, many years. It puts spring break very early in the spring. So we have added the April 30th optional teacher workday just to give kids and students and adults a day breather before we dive headfirst into testing in those three weeks of May. So everything else about this calendar is exactly the same as the second calendar, except for the spring break. So in the second draft, you have Good Friday, which is federal holiday, followed by an optional teacher workday on March the 29th, that Monday after Easter. And then a separate full week of spring break, April 12th through the 16th. Again, everything else is exactly the same. When we put these forward back in the fall, fifty-six, sorry, fifty-five point six percent of staff felt like the separate spring break would be better. Forty point seven percent said tie them back together in the traditional way. And then one staff was completely split. In their comments, the elementary folks spoke most highly of having that traditional spring break because they wanted to have more time in April and May to really drill in with testing before they hit testing those last two weeks in May. So, as you look at those, what questions might you have about the two calendars?
Ms. Thompson, do you happen to know how many districts in our area have went to an option where they designate the spring break at a certain time?
I know that there are some, Mr. Mullins, but I'm not, and Mr. Mullins, I'm not sure exactly how many. Most have, in our region, are keeping the two together.
Do we know when the end-of-grade testing would be?
End-of-grade testing is going to fall for elementary folks, the 10th through the 14th. And then middle high school, middle school is also the 10th through the 14th of May in '27. And then high school testing would be the 17th through the 21st. It's always the last 10 days of the school year. Advanced placement testing would start the week prior to that, the first week in May, because they have so many separate tests that they have to give, they start a little bit early.
I had this added back to the agenda because I know that people start planning their vacations early. And I thought the sooner we got a decision out there, the better it would be for everybody. I really wanted to start early, and the state passed a law for a flexible calendar, which really isn't that flexible. It's either you do it their way or you don't get money.
Yes, sir.
Deal, so starting on the 24th is about the only option we have unless we perfectly balance the calendars. Virtually impossible to do. That being said, I think splitting the spring break kind of works with this calendar because it is so early in the year and it's a long time between in the March and the, basically, the end of May. Up to the board as a whole to make the best.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Sigmund.
I wouldn't have any problems with splitting the vacation as far as the Easter with another week this year. I think it would be only fair for the ones that's working that to help them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sigmund. So would you be willing to make a motion for draft number two of the traditional start and separate spring break calendars for 2026-2027?
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion. We change it to, and split the vacation that way.
Hearing a motion in a second for draft two, traditional start and separate spring break calendars, 2026. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand. Is that for Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
That is unanimous for all in attendance, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Clayton Mullis did not raise his hand. Next on the agenda is approval for intercom system replacement at Charles H. Tuttle Elementary School, presented by Mr. Dan Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. We have a quote from B&amp;L Communications in the amount of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and one cent to replace the intercom system at Tuttle Elementary School. I would seek your approval and be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
If there are no questions for Mr. Moore, I seek a motion in a second for approval of the quote for intercom system replacement at Charles H. Tuttle Elementary School.
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
I second.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand.
Yes.
That's unanimous for the board members in attendance.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval for certified bid tabulation for rear parking lot repaving at St. Stevens Elementary School, presented by Mr. Dan Moore.
Thank you. This project involves the bus parking lot or rear parking lot at St. Stevens Elementary School. And we wanted to make sure that we address this need after the basic installation of our four-pack modular classroom at that location. The apparent low bidder is Hickory ceiling and striping in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And I would seek your approval and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are these the folks that did the front parking lot?
No, the front actually was, Precision Paving was the bid winner on the front.
They're going to pave from the back parking lot up to where the char come in? Get down right there. I think that's Dawn's dog. Go in and turn left, it's like they stopped paving at that point because it's thicker if you turn.
I wonder if the binder course was just, and the top coat had not been paved at that point?
Because that was yesterday when I went over and looked at it, it was still...
They are, yeah, they...
Okay. I was wondering if that was... Okay, that was my question. Any further questions for Mr. Moore on the paving project? Hearing none, I need a motion in a second for approval for certified bid tabulation for rear parking lot repaving at St. Stevens Elementary School.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand, with the exception of Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
That's unanimous for all board members in attendance.
Thank you.
Next, approval for requests for preschool classroom renovations at Balls Creek Elementary School, 400 hallway, presented by Mr. Dan Moore.
Thank you. This first document does not require your approval. It's basically just our contingency summary for this project. You'll note that we've had a couple of change directives. We had a thousand-dollar change directive with regard to a no-dollar limit for a warranty, twenty-year warranty. And when we moved that train equipment for this project into general contingency, we paid for that. We had prepaid for that material. So those are the first two items. And then tonight, we're discussing 3.1. But I'll be happy to answer any questions about this particular document before we move on to the approval of the change directive.
I think you're good.
All right, so this change directive involved several items at the pre-K renovation project, providing labor, materials, and equipment to prep and paint interior walls, doors, frames, and wooden window seals within Phase One and Phase Two. Labor, materials, and equipment to patch and paint the existing wall penetrations after the dual temp water lines have been removed. Labor, materials, and equipment to excavate, form, and place the new continuous concrete base for the new EFS wall. Labor and equipment to remove and dispose of all items associated with the existing fresh air unit above the ceiling between classrooms 414 and 415. Labor, materials, and equipment to add two-point-two-foot-by-two-foot acoustical ceiling and grid in the new toilet, identified as 413A, to provide labor, materials, and equipment to replace the removed asbestos fiber panels, five-inch inch drywall, replace the rotten wooden framing discovered behind the fiber panels, and to replace the damaged ceiling grid and ceiling tiles. All of these are conditions that are requested by the owner, by us, for this project. While we're there, we want to be able to make these upgrades and make sure that when we're done, we've addressed all of the items. Total amount of this change request is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. And I would seek your approval at this time, or be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We're seeking an approval for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing no further questions, I request a motion in a second for a change order directive for twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents at Balls Creek Pre-K Elementary School for the renovation project.
I'll make a motion that we accept the change order.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand, and Mr. Sigmund verbal. We couldn't hear you, but it seemed like you said yes.
I've been here, yes. I don't know which one was this thing.
That's unanimous for all board members in attendance. Next item is approval of request for HVAC replacement at Claremont Elementary School, presented by Dan Moore.
Thank you. Again, this document is a general contingency summary. We've only had one adjustment to this contingency summary at this point, and that is where we added the value back into the project once we were able to pay for that train equipment. The amount that is listed is nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifteen cents. And I'll be glad to speak to that if there's no other questions with regard to this summary.
Hearing no questions, I seek a motion and approval for change directive at Claremont Elementary School HVAC renovation project.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand, Mr. Sigmund verbal.
Yes, yes.
That's unanimous for all board members in attendance.
Thank you.
Next is approval for request for HVAC replacement project at Maiden Middle School, again, by Mr. Dan Moore.
This is a general contingency summary for this project. You'll note that, again, replacing the value of the purchased equipment being the first change directive. And tonight, we're going to discuss two, three, and four. And if all of these change directives are met, we will still have a substantial amount of money remaining to complete this project. But I'll be happy to discuss any of that with you if you like.
Hearing no further questions, I seek an approval, motion in a second for the Maiden Middle School HVAC project.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor shall raise a hand, Mr. Sigmund verbal.
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Next is approval of proposed amendments for Catawba County Board of Education Policies, 7.1700, Employee Conflict of Interest, presented by Ms. Crystal Davis.
You want to present it?
Sure.
Okay. Tell them kind of the history. This was...
Okay. So Chairman Settlemeyer, Dr. Stover, and members of the board. So we have been speaking with the other Ms. Davis regarding our employee conflict of interest policy. It looks like this policy was revised last November, has had several revisions. Upon executing a policy, sometimes tweaks are needed to be made. First of all, we wanted to make sure, with Ms. Davis's help, that our students' mental and/or physical healthcare needs or medical needs are not hindered by this policy. And that sometimes can take place depending on the providers and the access that you have for medical, physical, mental, emotional needs for students. So she did make the revision of the policy to have a concession there for that. Also, the policy as it stands right now speaks to a concession for immediate family. It defines immediate family. And so first, we want to make sure that the board knows it is very important. I know it's important to me, I know it's important to Dr. Stover, to the school district, that we have integrity in our purchasing and our ethics. And so we want to make sure that no conflicts of interest do really exist when it comes to using certain vendors. Um, and so we want to make sure that no conflicts of interest, um, do really exist when it comes to using certain vendors, um, for certain things. However, um, Catawba County Schools is the third largest employer in Catawba County. Um, so when you're looking to use a vendor for any need at the school district level, um, at the district level, um, then you have, um. When, when you have immediate family as defined in the policy right now, and it goes into, um, in-law relationships, brother, um. Step relationships, those kind of things, it, it becomes very challenging to find, uh, vendors in the county, being the third largest employer that would, um. That would meet the definition and that we would be able to use. So, um, just personally, in my experience being here a short period of time, I know many principals have reached out with questions. There have been many vendors that we have not been able to use. Simply because they might be, um, you know, have a step relationship or an in-law relationship with that employee here, although no real conflict exists. Um, so I do believe as the policy stands, it was creating somewhat of an undue burden on our schools. Um, it also, I think inadvertently, uh, didn't even intend to, but pushed business out of the county. Um, because if you can't find vendors in the county, um, that would meet the definition, then you do have to look a little bit further out. So we were, um, not meeting to, but spending a lot of our dollars outside the county. Also, sometimes it was a detriment to the school's budget. So if there is a vendor in the county that may happen to be related to someone at a different school. And no conflict of interest persists, but they want to help out our district, many of our vendors will do that. Um, and offer a discount to our schools for whatever product they have, um, they would not be able to use that vendor. Um, so it, it did somewhat end up being a detriment to our schools, trying to do the best they could with their money as well. Um, and then also just kind of closer to home for me, it created some inequities with, um, the integrity of our vendor process. So. Um, the policy as it stands, um, again, when we are not allowed to use, uh, vendors who have that in-law relationship, they may be a cousin. Um, or distant relation, but, but is defined in immediate family. Um, for the finance department, we are only able to not use those vendors that we are aware of. Um, and so I do believe there are probably many vendors in Catawba County Schools, or excuse me, in Catawba County. Um, employ, people who own those businesses that have somewhat of a relationship with our employees here. We're just not aware of that. Um, so that makes it very hard to police and so it does create some inequities because again, we're only able to enforce those that we are, uh, aware of. Um, so what we asked Ms. Davis to do, we kind of worked on this, was to go back to the very original school board association recommended policy. Um, and the school board association defined it, defined a conflict of interest and a direct benefit that someone would receive from a contract. Um, if the employee or his or her spouse does any of the following, so if the employee or their spouse has more than a ten percent ownership. Um, in the business or the ent- entity that's a party to the contract, or if they derive any income or commission directly from the contract. Or acquire property under the contract. Um, and that, that was the raw score, school board association policy. Um, now I will also say that, um, you all, we all have another policy. Uh, policy, um, six dot forty four twenty that speaks to vendor lists and it does give Dr. Stover and or his designee. The authority, um, to not include a vendor in our school district for a defined reason. So if we do feel like there is some type of, um, conflict that, that is happening. Um, something that may not pass the smell test, as we like to say, then Dr. Stover is allowed to say. No, I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to be able to use that vendor because, you know, it's just something's not right. Um, so we do want to maintain integrity in the purchasing process, but we also want to make sure that by doing that, we're not putting an undue burden on our schools. Um, because they, they do, um, when they look for products and services, they get bids, they get quotes. Um, so if someone happens to be related to someone across the county, this is going to allow them the freedom, um, as long as no conflict exists. To use that vendor. Um, so that's kind of the back, backstory of the revisions of the policy and she, she can give you more information on that.
So this originated, of course, it, the policy that was in place before, uh, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Was indeed the updated version of the North Carolina School Boards Association Policy. And unfortunately Carla had experienced, Carla, uh, Aldridge had experienced some, um, pretty specific issues relating to. Um, vendors taking an op- taking opportunities to, um. To sell to schools, students and community. Who's, whose family was on the sports coaching teams. And, um, Carla actually asked me, um, several times about this revision. Um, she actually asked to, for me to define what, uh, immediate family was in other policies. And then requested a policy change in November, in November of twenty twenty four. So that's the why come of why that policy change was made. It was a direct request from our finance officer at the time. Um, I did make some changes to make this a little more readable. Um, if you'll see that in A, uh, when, um. Ms. Davis actually said that she wanted the, um, she would prefer that the immediate family section be removed. It didn't read real well as far as an employee shall not do any of the following with subsection five. So I just changed, I took out the immediate family references that she objected to. And then changed, if you'll see in A, one, two, three, four and five in policy seven point one, seven oh. Just beginning each sentence with an employee shall not, so that that's clear. And, uh, then section five is where we, um, that was the request of Ms. Thompson, um, where we, um, we. I, I think as Angie put it so well, uh, Ms. Davis, sorry, put it so well that, um, we want to make sure that. We're meeting both students and employees' medical, um, and mental health needs, and that's employees as well. Um, and it, because of the large, um, size of hospitals and medical practices, it would be impossible to vet. Um, all of that. So, um, that's, that's the why come in number five. There is still a provision that's up to the board. About employees, um. Uh, not engaging in or having, excuse me. Uh. An employee shall not engage in or have gained or derive a financial interest in selling goods or services to the board. Directly or indirectly and shall not engage in or have a financial in- interest in directly or indirectly. In any activity that conflicts with their duties. So that's specific to the employee, not even. But that, number five is not in the recommended North Carolina School Boards Association, uh, policy. That is something that's been particular, um, that was particular to Catawba County Schools. It is reworded and the information in number five is added, um, as far as the, um, medical. Medical services and educational services to students. Any questions about that? It's just my, my added background.
So why do all the other school districts in North Carolina that use this policy?
I don't know.
Are they going in there for a specific reason?
Um, it's been, um, again, as far as the, the provision in there with regard to employment and vendor contracts with the board. That are, except for in, uh, employment and vendor contracts with the board that are approved by the board. And which provide educational and medical services to students. An employee shall not engage in or gain or have derived a financial interest. That's been in place since, um, I believe Sandra Wolf was here. Um, we actually had an employee at the time who was selling keyboards to the school system. And, um, he was an employee and was also had a piano business and was selling, um. Keyboards and so not only was he selling to the school system, but the prices were higher than at any normal. So Sandra Wolf at that time, um, felt the need and recommended that that provision be in there. It has been, I did reword it because we needed to put the exception in that Ms. Thomas, uh, excuse me, Ms. Thompson. So I don't know about other school systems. I know it's not in the school board's policy, but. There's a lot of policies we, we have with things that are not in the school board association. Does, does that, it, does all of that make sense to you guys? You have any other questions of need or?
Yes, why, why are we, why did we not make these changes?
Well, I did, Ms. Thompson.
This is based off the North Carolina School Board Association follow-up.
Well, uh, we did have it in place. Um, this North Carolina School Boards Association policy was added to, we added to it in November. And that was at the request of Ms. Aldridge. So we took that out now at the request of administration of the states. And then added in, making su- sure there was an exception for employment and vendor contracts that are with the board that are approved by the board.
And I can give a few examples if it, if it helps of, um, the, the before and after maybe as it was, as I understand it. Um, there, there were, there was some activities, as, as Ms. Davis said before, prior, that maybe had led, uh, Ms. Miller to, to want the restrictions. Um, since I have been here, I know that we have one employee who wanted to use a company, um, to do some rental, chair rentals at their school. Um, and they were going to use this company, actually two schools had used this company in the past. Um, and were told that they couldn't use this company because they were a sister of another employee. Now they're grown adults, separate households. This person who's an employee with us, his, you know, derives no benefit from anyone in the school system using his sister's company and he himself does not use his sister's company. Because he feels it as if it would create somewhat of a conflict, appearance of conflict. Um, but someone across the county couldn't use them for that reason. Um, we also had someone who was a part-time employee, so they weren't even fully benefited with us, um, worked twenty hours a week. Um, their grown adult daughter had a company and no one in the school district can use that company because of this part-time twenty hour a week, um, tutor. So, um, it, it, it just kind of creates, uh, it, some handcuffs to our schools. Um, when I first came, I went out to visit with our principals and, um, unprompted, several mentioned this policy to me. Um, just how restrictive it had been, um, I guess since the revisions were in place. And then since then, I've had two or three different ones reach out to me, different scenarios, needed a special piece of equipment, worked on. One dealership in the county works on that piece of equipment, took that piece of equipment and when they went to fill out the vendor form. They're the in-law of someone who works for Catawba County Schools, so they couldn't do business with them. So. Um, just running into, to oddities like that, um, that kind of make it restrictive for our schools. So that, that's the reason for, for my request, if that helps at all.
Something like that, could we not do a sole source vendor?
Well, technically they're not sole sourced because you can go outside the county. I mean, there are other people who do it. Um, it's just not convenient. It might be more expensive. Um, and it's not located in Catawba County, but, but you can find other vendors that do it.
I mean, I personally would like more time to think on this.
That's why, I mean, it's up to the board.
How do y'all feel about that?
I have a question. So you're specifically calling out educational and medical services. Is there, is there a situation that, that is? So I, I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand the question, the, the issue, um. With approving that, um, if it's, if it's to make sure that our kids are going to get, make sure that they have what they need medically and mentally.
I didn't say I wouldn't prove it. I just like some time to think on it because. Why are just, well, I don't know if it's just us, why are, why are we just using this very specific language in our policy? Why would other school boards not say, hey, that's a good idea. Why don't the, the state put that in there or the North Carolina School Board Association's added in there? I was just, I was just going to call around and look around online and see what other school systems might be using a specific language like this because it's, it seems very targeted. Why the state wouldn't go ahead and say something, or why the North Carolina School Boards Association wouldn't go ahead and say something like this? Seems kind of odd. That would just give me time to, to do my research.
Medical and, um, healthcare.
Thank you. Uh, so do we need a motion and all that to table that?
Motion to table.
Alright, so I'd like to, I, I mean, I, I request a motion to table this until, uh, our August meeting to give us time to read through this and. Kind of compare policies from other school districts. I need a motion and a second on that.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second, is there a further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling until August meeting, show of hand and verbal, Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
That's, uh, unanimous for all those, uh, in attendance. That's unanimous for all those in attendance.
Chairman Settlemeyer, if you don't mind, I just want to tell the board too, you're going to see these SPG two, one, three, fours on there. And that was part of the board's goals earlier, I was telling Chairman Settlemeyer and neglected to tell you that earlier and I apologize. Excuse me, that, that's part of the board's goals to align their agendas to the strategic plan. And so we've put those on there for you so you could see how that your agenda relates directly to our strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Staver. Next on the agenda is approval of North Carolina School Boards Association parliamentary procedures. We got. Mr. Mullis actually got with Ms., our board secretary, Ms. Wetzel, and we had a couple of options here. One is Adam Miller, the staff attorney at the North Carolina School Boards Association. Another is an attorney, Jim Slaughter, a certified professional parliamentarian. What we got from the staff attorney at the North Carolina School Boards Association was estimated total cost of $983.80 and that's for approximately 75 to 90 minutes of training. Plus round trip expenses for that training. And the outright attorney, Mr. Slaughters, was a $2,500 flat rate fee. Seems to me that we should probably go with Adam Miller up on the North Carolina. Training. Are there any further questions, comments about this? All right, hearing none, I seek a motion and a second to approve Adam Miller, the staff attorney with the North Carolina. Provide parliamentary procedures and Robert's rule of training for the Catawba County Board of Education Work Session for September 22nd, 2025.
I make a motion to accept Adam Miller as our attorney.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors, shall raise a hand.
Yes.
Yes.
That's unanimous for all attending board members. Okay. We do have a need to go into closed session for personnel reasons. And real estate. I need a motion to go into closed session.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, shall raise a hand.
Yes.
That's unanimous. Turn at. Ten after eight. Closed session.
Hearing none, all those in favor show of hands. That's unanimous by all present board members. As far as item number 14, the added car wash, we're going to table this for the near future. All those in, I need a motion in a second to table.
A second.
All those in favor show a raised hand. That's unanimous by all present board members. Next motion is to adjourn the Top County Boards of Education meeting for July 28, 2025.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
I've had a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor show a raised hand. This meeting is adjourned.